Uba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake self storage dot com.
Called order meeting July 11, 2025. Marysville Joint Unified School District roll call. Mr. Fuhrer. Mr. Yang. Mr. Taylor. Mr. Steeman. Mr. Kriddle here and absent is Mr. Crawford. Two point one pledge of allegiance. Mr. Sestiman, Vice President of the Board trustees.
Please stand for the pledge. Salute pledge.
Flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Moving into public comment two point one information about public comments persons wishing to address the board under public comments or specific agenda items prior to the board taking action must complete a public comments card and place it in the basket. Speakers will be invited to the podium in order of the public comment cards that were received. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Twenty minutes total time for public input on each item per board by law nine, three, two, three. The Ralph Brandt, the Ralph M. Brown Act prevents the Board of Trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, four point two A states, no action or discussion shall be undertaken by on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except for members of a legislative body or its staff by briefly response from statements made and questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony under. Received. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Twenty minutes total time for public input on each item per board by law nine, three, two, three. The Ralph Brandt, the Ralph M. Brown Act prevents the Board of Trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, four point two A states, no action or discussion shall be undertaken by on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except for members of a legislative body or its staff by briefly response from statements made and questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony under section five, four, nine, five, four, three. And we have two comments. First one is Joanna Lasaga.
Good evening. I just wanted to tell you guys thank you for moving public comment that we don't have to sit through three hour meetings now before we can actually make our comments. And I would urge you guys to vote to keep women's sports in a in a fair direction. But thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Saga. Next comment is from Sandra Torres.
Good evening, President Kriddle, Board members, Superintendent Reeves and Cabinet members. My name is Sandra Torres. I thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly with you this evening. You're gathered here to begin an open discussion to initiate a process to fill trustee area two vacancy. I come to you as a resident of trustee area two since 2005. During that time, I've supported our students at various levels from purchasing chocolate bars at my front door to providing resources for our hope program, supporting FFA and music students, all the way up to voting on bond measures that improve facilities to drive student safety and achievement, as well as encouraging others to do the same. As a recent employee of MJUSD. Process to fill trustee area two vacancy. I come to you as a resident of trustee area two since 2005. During that time, I've supported our students at various levels from purchasing chocolate bars at my front door to providing resources for our hope program, supporting FFA and music students, all the way up to voting on bond measures that improve facilities to drive student safety and achievement, as well as encouraging others to do the same. As a recent employee of MJUSD, I collaborated with the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, where I managed curriculum for school sites, aided parents and community members, and prepared the board agenda packets for board review. Supporting education has been my career for the past 20 years. Marysville is my community, and I have a vested interest in and a passion for the success of our students, their families, and this district as a whole. As you initiate your process, I would welcome you and encourage you to create a wish list of qualifications for your successful candidate. The following qualifications may include, but certainly should not be limited to, the following: someone who is committed to promoting opportunities for student excellence; someone who collaboratively and with forethought makes decisions that drive your supports for all students to succeed; someone with a working knowledge of the Brown Act and the policies that guide the board's actions; someone who can offer a district employee perspective on the board; and someone who can work with the existing board members, engage with stakeholders, and look at issues from all sides when called upon to make the tough decisions that the board is sometimes expected to make. As luck would have it, I possess many of these qualities and would welcome the opportunity to speak with you further on my ability and interest to fill this position. I wish you a successful selection process and thank you for your time and for your service to our district and our community.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Torres. Appreciate it. We're moving on to new business. Number three, three point one resignation of trustee area two board member, Mr. Richard Ricardo, sorry, Ricardo Galicia.
Welcome the opportunity to speak with you further on my ability and interest to fill this position. I wish you a successful selection process and thank you for your time and for your service to our district and our community.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Torres. Appreciate it. We're moving on to new business. Number three, three point one resignation of trustee area two board member, Mr. Richard Ricardo, sorry, Ricardo Galicia, initiating the process to fill trustee area two vacancy with provisional appointment, ed code section five oh nine three, board bylaws nine, two, 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 and nine, two, two, three. Purpose of the item on the agenda here is to provide the board of trustees with an opportunity to discuss and initiate the process for filing the vacant trustee seat representing area two. Background on June 30, 2025, board member Ricardo Galicia formally resigned from his position representing area two resulting in a vacancy on the Marysville Joint Unified School District Board of Trustees. Jordan?
So really now it's an opportunity for the board to have a discussion as far as the next steps. There's one resignation that we can roll all things into one item to have a motion and a vote. But the board has options as far as postings. We have to legally post it on our district webpage timelines. How soon to fill the position? We have a legal obligation to fill it within 60 days if not sooner. So those are certainly some of the things to discuss. I know the board's been operating or functioning, I should say, not at full capacity probably over the last three or four months. And I know we're eager to fill a vacancy with a candidate who will be present at our board meetings. So at this time, this is an opportunity for the board to have some discussion with regards to direction that they would like me to move forward with on behalf of the board as we fill. This time, this is an opportunity for the board to have some discussion with regards to direction that they would like me to move forward with on behalf of the board as we fill the vacancy.
Thank you. So we'll be posting on a website for applications and the deadline would be, we do, the board wants to fill this as quickly as possible, just as, as Mr. Reeves indicated, just because we're, we'd like to have as many full participating members as possible. And we're looking at having an application deadline July 21. Is it by noon, July 31st and noon?
I would say noon if the desire is to have it at the July 22 board meeting.
Yes.
Because essentially qualifications for a trustee, they have to be a registered voter residing in trustee area two. They need to meet all eligibility requirements established by applicable laws and not be legally disqualified from holding civil office. Those are essentially three items that as we're looking, since the district doesn't have a formal application process, I've been working with Brian Williams on setting up a email that will be posted for, if there's inquiries, they can reach out to her as well. We'd like to get it posted as, you know, as soon as possible, all the information. So if the deadline's the 21st, it makes sense if the board wants to move forward at the July 22nd board meeting.
And I believe that the posting that is set that we're going to be filling for the interim would go to the next available election date. Is that correct?
As far as the term?
The term.
So the term would, as far as the term would end in 2026. Is that the question that you're asking?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes. Which is interesting, but we have consulted with legal because the original seat would have gone through. The original seat would have gone through December of 2028 because it's a provisional appointee. The person would serve till the next election, which would be November 2026. And there were actually would be two seats up at that case, trustee Crawford, as well as this particular one.
This is open public. This is discussion items. Is there any questions from the audience? Yes, go ahead to podium so we can hear you. Thank you.
You would have two seats open for that district, correct?
That is correct.
Instead of you, typically you have every, every two years it alternates. So in that one, does it ever get corrected to where it goes then to, so you don't have both up in that district at the same time?
Yeah, that's a great question because it's going to be a four year term. I don't know how that would be because it would make sense essentially what you're saying that.
Their first term would be two years.
Two years and then they run again. Two years.
And then the next one would be four.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Seth.
Okay. Board, did you have any questions?
This is a question more for Jordan. Since we're making the decision on behalf of district two voters, can that email that we're soliciting interest, could we use that same email to solicit any questions that voters may have?
Yeah.
So that we can have some clear questions to ask the candidates?
Yeah. So part of the posting will be for more information or to obtain, not necessarily an application. We're going to rephrase it to a letter of interest because we don't actually have a formal application.
Got it.
Please contact Anna Curry at the district office or visit our website. But then we will have an established email that will be board interest at MJUSD dot K12 dot C A dot U S, which will also be posted on the district website.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I seem to recall that you mentioned last time that there was two ways to. I seem to recall that you mentioned last time that there was two ways to do it. One was applications and one was runner up. Is that, and we're doing the application or?
Yeah, so the board can appoint provisionally in a number of ways. I think what the board's seeking to do is seek the letter of interest from qualified candidates of area two and then essentially go from there where they can conduct an interview, an open session, which what I'm understanding would be July 22nd, and then essentially make a decision at that point. So essentially opening it up. But yes, the board does have a right to appoint an individual if they so choose.
Any further questions from board or, or members of the audience? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to number four, new business superintendent. This is four point one is to approve the resolution.
So just backing up, I just want to make sure for clarification, the board's confirming the resignation of trustee Galicia. So we'll need a motion for that. We're going to post it to the district website, a letter, essentially seeking letter of interest, the advertisement in the district website with a deadline of Monday, July 21st at 12 p.m.
Do I have a motion for that from the board?
I motion.
Okay. Motion from Seth, second from Mr. Yang. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Motion carries. New business superintendent four point one, that's approving the resolution of the 2025 26 forward slash O two supporting Title IX and fairness in girls interscholastic sports. This is an actionable item.
Okay, moving forward with the board resolution, trustee Steeman is going to read the resolution on behalf of the board.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to number four, new business superintendent. This is four point one is to approve the resolution.
So just backing up, I just want to make sure for clarification, the board's confirming the resignation of trustee Galicia. So we'll need a motion for that. We're going to post it to the district website, a letter, essentially seeking letter of interest, the advertisement in the district website with a deadline of Monday, July 21st at 12 p.m.
Do I have a motion for that from the board?
I motion.
Okay.
Motion from Seth, second from Mr. Yang. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Motion carries. New business superintendent four point one, that's approving the resolution of the 2025 26 forward slash O two supporting Title IX and fairness in girls interscholastic sports. This is an actionable item.
Okay, moving forward with the board resolution, trustee Steeman is going to read the resolution on behalf of the board with regards to supporting Title IX and fairness in girls interscholastic, interscholastic, excuse me, sports.
Supporting Title IX and fairness in girls interscholastic sports, whereas the Marysville Joint Unified School District is committed to upholding fairness, safety, and equal opportunities for all student athletes, and whereas Title IX of the Federal Education Amendments of 1972 was enacted to prohibit sex-based discrimination in any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance, ensuring that female athletes have equal opportunities to compete and excel in sports, and whereas biological differences between male and female athletes can create inherent advantages in competitive sports, particularly in categories designated specifically for girls. And whereas the California interscholastic and whereas biological differences between male and female athletes can create inherent advantages in competitive sports, particularly in categories designated specifically for girls. And whereas the California Interscholastic Federation, CIF, is responsible for governing interscholastic athletics and must ensure that policies align with the principles of fairness, safety, and equal opportunity outlined in Title IX. And whereas protecting the integrity of girls' sports is essential to maintaining an even playing field for female athletes and preserving the intent of Title IX. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marysville Joint Unified School District affirms its unwavering support for Title IX and calls on athletic governing bodies to uphold its protections by ensuring fairness in girls' sports, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to the Governor of California, the California State Legislature, the California Department of Education, and the California Interscholastic Federation to demonstrate MJUSD's commitment to protecting female student athletes. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Well, with that, may I have a motion? Motion from Mr. Seth Steeman, second from Mr. Fuhrer. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Motion carries. The next scheduled board meeting will be July 22 here. And right now, meeting is adjourned.
Uba Sutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self storage in Plumas Lake where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at Plumas Lake self storage dot com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Sutter, and Nevada Counties.